Good evening and welcome to the August 18, 2022 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm going to call us to order and ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to do a quick roll call of trustees, and I see that trustee Musial is present with us by Zoom. Trustee Laura Smith Everett is now present with us, and then I see trustees Hamel, Costin, and Ingram are present. And I miss, I saw trustee Ratan earlier at the foundation event, but I think she had a commitment today.
She had a commitment.
Okay. So with that said, I believe we have a quorum. The next item on our agenda is awards and recognition tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bound.
Well, good evening, and again, this is, I think for, for all of us, this is one of the highlights of the meeting, is when we get to spend time with one of our students. And so tonight is no different. Tonight, it's my privilege to introduce you to Maria Palasuelos, and she gave me the thumbs up, so I got it right. That's what helps from being a student that studied Spanish in college. So anyways, Maria, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself, and I bet this group will have a question or two for you.
Okay. Do I talk into this thing, or does it matter?
You do. You're good.
Okay. So I'm Maria Palasuelos. I'm in my second year at Juco. So yeah, this is going to be my fifth semester. Yeah, right. So originally, I was born in Mexico. I was born in Guadalajara, and I moved here when I was a baby. So I've been in Overland Park ever since, and I did kindergarten, preschool through eighth grade at Holy Cross. So I was there forever, and then I graduated eighth grade, and I went to St. Thomas Aquinas, so a minute away, and then I graduated there, and then I came here. So I've been here ever since, and I'm currently getting my liberal arts degree, but I don't know what I want to do. I like so many things, and I'm interested in so many things, and then I stop liking them, and then I like them again, so I'm just taking general things for, like, everything. And I'm the vice president of the Student Senate here. So I was a senator my first year here, and then I ran for exec board. I made it, so now I'm the vice president here, and I'm really excited for this year now that more things are getting back to normal after COVID. I'm excited to see what we do.
Well, thank you for being here. Any questions for Maria? Trustee Costin.
Thank you. What is your biggest challenge this year?
This year? I've, I've struggled a lot with balancing just everything when it comes to school and also working, and then also making sure I have a social life and not just doing work in school. So over the summer, I worked like three jobs, and then I would come here for, you know, like senate things and meetings and things like events and things that I had to be at. And I would be exhausted by the end of every day, and I wouldn't have, like, my social battery would just be drained absolutely. So I want to work a lot on making sure that I'm not doing too much of one thing and that it's keeping me from doing more of another thing, so I think that's probably something that I am going to have a challenge with this semester.
Trustee Laura Smith Everett.
Maria, thank you so much for being here. I wanted to just encourage you that as a passion, another passionate person, that's what I like to refer to people like us who have a lot of things we like to do, and all of it is equally important and all of it is equally interesting, to keep pursuing each of those passions, and one day you'll find a fit. For me, it was teaching, and it is so great to have you as part of JCC, and I'm grateful that you're here to help us and be part of the Student Senate, so thank you so much for that. My question would be, what is your current favorite? You can just have, you know, even just this week, it doesn't have to even be, you know, a long-term commitment to this club or outside activity that you're just getting involved with, or you really are excited about right now?
So besides Student Senate, I really like Luna. They're the Latinos United Now and Always group on campus, and they do a lot of things. They put on a lot of events that are really, like, special to me, just because that's a big part of who I am. So they'll do a bunch of Day of the Dead stuff. They did like this huge quinceañera event last year, so it, like, makes me feel, I don't know, it just makes me happy to see that on campus and see them promoting that, so other people that aren't as familiar with kind of get a chance to know more about it.
Well, thank you for that. I'm really glad to hear that. I actually have a neighbor who's Latino, and the mom was asking me just recently if there was an active Latino club or group on campus, and I said yes, and you, and the group has really in the last, even during COVID, was really ramping up and doing some great stuff. So I will encourage him to come seek you guys out during one of those events and get involved. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. And I'm now going to attempt to re-mute myself, but if I'm not, all the wizards behind the curtain, you feel free to mute me.
Any other questions for Maria? Trustee Hamel, excuse me, sorry.
You're good. I'm also one of the people that has a lot of, a lot of things I enjoy, kind of a jack of all trades. I was curious if you found anything new while you were here at Johnson County that you added to your list?
Engineering. It's like the thing that I'm most interested about right now, and coming in, I never in a million years would have pictured myself liking that. And it was kind of a mix of talking to people that were already, you know, focused in that and kind of getting a different perspective, and just how many different ways and things you could do while in, you know, that bubble of engineering. So I think, yeah, right now, that's probably one of, like, the things I'm most excited about that I could see myself doing, and if you asked me two years ago, I would have been like, no, never. So yeah, probably that.
Thank you for sharing.
If I may follow up, what type of engineering?
I really am interested in civil engineering. I don't, yeah, I don't know why, it's just something that I personally find really interesting. And like I said, maybe even like a year ago, I would have been like, no. And now it's something that, you know, I keep learning more about, so that specifically.
My dad and a brother are both civil engineers who went here. My daughter's name is Maria, I just want to go through that on my notes real quick. Did I, did you say what you would do next, what you think you'll do next? I missed it, sorry.
No. I also don't know. I have so much to think about, but I know I want to get out of Kansas. I was talking about it earlier, that I've loved growing up here, and I think it's a great place to have a family, but, you know, I'm kind of like, yeah, time to maybe go somewhere else. And my cousins, they've, it's been like a common theme with us, that, you know, we grow up here, and then everyone's getting to a certain age, and one's in San Diego, and one's in Vegas, one's somewhere else, so now it might be my turn to book it somewhere else. So yeah, I kind of want to get out, and maybe even before I decide strictly on something that I want to do with my career, maybe get out and see other things first, maybe something will come to me then, but I know I want to leave Kansas.
Well, I'm not as passionate as trustee Laura Smith Everett, maybe, but I worked in Washington DC, came home. My dad is in Frisco, Texas. My other brother's in San Antonio, Texas. My brother married a Venezuelan woman, and he's in Miami now. My other brother Paul's in the Navy in Virginia. And so if that's not good enough for you, UMKC is just across the border. The Regents wouldn't want me to say that, but I too wanted to see something beyond Kansas, and I'm glad we had the opportunity to help shape you. So I think trustee Costin.
I was just going to say, I'm just so glad that you've had the opportunity to have this amazing liberal arts approach to education, so that you can try all of these different topics and have instructors who teach you about the world and the things that they do in the world. And so it's really exciting to see you get, get excited about something you had no interest in before you stepped foot on campus. So that is really cool.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Any other questions for Maria? Maria, thank you for being here. Can I take a swing at your name? Palasuelos?
Yes.
Palasuelos.
Yeah, perfect.
Trustee Cross.
Yes, ma'am.
I think Mr. Musial, trustee Musial was trying to unmute, and there we go.
And if I may, Kansas State University is a fine university.
I think you were sucking up to me, except you're absolutely true. I just wanted to say, Maria, like Chairman Cross, I left Kansas for three years of school and four years in DC and came back. So go find your passion, find your expertise, but we want talented people like you back here in Kansas or in the Kansas City area. And Chair Cross, I will tell you, I don't know if Laura has the same experience, I can't find a raise hand function on my Zoom, so if I have something, I'll just have to wave my hand, I guess.
I apologize, I missed you. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Thank you for speaking up.
I was here looking for the you raise hand, and I don't see it.
We should just get red flags, and we'll wave them in the camera tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further from the trustees for Maria? Maria, thank you very much, and best of luck to you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you again, Maria. Next item on our agenda is the open forum. Did you have something?
Oh, just, I want to, we were recognized earlier this month by the Olathe Public Schools, and actually, the people that we'd want to engage in this are actually across campus in a foundation event that's actually happening at the same time. But the Olathe Public Schools were kind enough to recognize us for the partnership, both as a college and as a foundation, in partnering with the Olathe Public Schools to educate students, and we appreciate their partnership, so.
I thank you. I get nervous, and I'm sorry to have rushed through it. I apologize to the people of Olathe and their schools, and I believe they presented that to trustee Ingram.
They did.
Yes. Trustee Ingram has a history with Olathe. Next item on our agenda is the open forum session, and to Dr. Bound, Chagrin, I'm going to read this entire thing. Procedures and requirements for, we don't have anybody in the open forum, do we?
We do not.
We do not. Very good. So the open forum is an agenda item at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Number two, speakers wanting to make public comment via Zoom webinar must register by completing the registration form below. By 5:00 PM the day before the scheduled Board of Trustees meeting, speakers must provide their names, city residents, name of any group they are representing, the topic of discussion, and a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation, as well as the email address and phone number the speaker will be using to access the Zoom meeting. Three, the Zoom link and conference number will be listed on the JCC board of, board meetings page. Registered speakers should be familiar with Zoom functionality before logging into the Board of Trustees meeting. Registered speakers should wait until called upon by the chair to speak, at which time the recognized speaker will be granted electronic access to address the board. Number four, speakers wanting to make public comment in person must register through this form by 5:00 PM the day before or in person 15 minutes before the start of this meeting outside of this room, GEB 137. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak. If there is a significant number of registered speakers at that time, the time will be reduced for each registered speaker at the discretion of the chair or me. Number six, when addressing the board, registered speakers should be respectful and civil and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Personal insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired live on television, and the offensive comments based on protected status or class are prohibited, please. Number seven, the chair of the board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions on any disruptive behavior of those participating in a board meeting. It says here, "Thank you for your interest. The open forum speaker registration is currently closed. Details upon upcoming meetings and registration availability can be accessed at the board and committee meetings page." And I've been on this board for nine years, and if you sat on this board for nine years, you too would read that entire thing. Thank you for your patience. Any questions about the open forum? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is the board reports, and the first item on the agenda is from the college lobbyist, Richard Carter.
Thank you, trustee Cross. I won't go into the details of the written items contained in my report, but as always, a multitude of things have occurred since that report was distributed on Tuesday. Canvassing has been completed, and election contests have been certified. The only real race that was in question was the state treasurer's race, which has been won by Stephen Johnson. The margin was still very slim, but primary candidate Karen Tyson conceded to the race yesterday, and Johnson now faces state treasurer Lynn Rogers. That was an incredibly close race, and one that, that was just very interesting to watch the different pieces of play out. The big news of the week is the announcement of three new Regents appointments. John Dykis, Blake Benson, and Diane Mendoza were named to succeed Regents Mark Hutton, Alan Schmidt, and Bill Fireborn, interestingly, all who were previously state representatives. Dykis is chairman and chief executive officer of Capitol Federal Savings. He serves as a trustee on the Washburn University Foundation, as an executive committee trustee of the University of Kansas Endowment Association, and a current board chair of the Greater Topeka Partnership. Benson serves as the president of the Pittsburgh Chamber of Commerce. He also serves on the Board of Directors for Ascension Via Christie Hospital in Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh State University Foundation. Diana Mendoza is the director of BSL and diversity at Dodge City Public Schools. She's also a Dodge City Community College graduate. Mendoza has been in public service for more than 20 years, serving as a teacher, instructional coach, and district level director. You may recall the drama that surrounded the most recently appointed Regents through the confirmation process. These appointees will also go through the confirmation process, but talk is already beginning to swirl that legislators may want to hold off any formal confirmation hearings because of the timing this close to the gubernatorial election. We'll continue to watch this play out, but I can say that knowing two of the three candidates, we would be in very good hands, and the third one, which I'm not familiar with, having community college connections, is also really good. So we'll see what happens. You know how this game is played and how the process works, but, but all three would be great additions to, to the Board of Regents. The, the other interesting news is just about an hour ago, we learned of a new program that'll be going on over at the University of Missouri-Kansas City, announced a series of scholarships that will provide free tuition in some form of need-based application to Missouri and Kansas first time, and transfer students who are Pell eligible. They're not calling it the Missouri Promise or anything like that, but there seem to be some similarities. The new scholarship program will be called Rue Nation Award, and will cover any remaining full-time tuition not covered by other scholarships or grants. The other important factors are the scholarship will extend in-state tuition rates to non-Missouri residents. To qualify, students must be US citizens with a high school GPA of at least 3.0. The in-state tuition rate will not apply for medical, pharmacy, dentistry, and law students. That program begins this fall, and so we're going to see some very serious competition just across the state line with, with this type of, of program being offered that's a little bit different. I don't know the details, if there's any clawback provisions, or any of the similarities that, that maybe were developed as, as the Kansas Promise Act was worked through the process. But again, when you start looking at institutions along the state line, that will be a strong competitor for, for students that we are also courting. So Chairman Cross, I think that kind of completes the, the comments that, that bring us up to date. And again, if there's questions about anything that was in the printed version of the, the report, I'd be happy to answer those as well, but I would stop there and, and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Any questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee Laura Smith Everett.
Mr. Carter, always bringing us the breaking news of the day, so thank you for that. I, first of all, I wanted to make a note, not like the camera on this, I apologize. I wanted to make a note about your printed report that you provide us, and just comment that the election season drones on is such a pessimistic way to think about election season. For some of us, it's a sporting event. We just pull up a seat and grab a bucket of popcorn, so, you know, have a little fun with it.
Absolutely.
And then the other question I had was, while the, I know we're not in session right now, but you write extensively about the surplus that we have, and I didn't get a sense that we really are hearing about bills, initiatives, or big things. One in particular was fully funding special ed in Kansas, which I know died at the last session, but I wondered if you could give any, maybe just predictions on what the sense is about that surplus and any initiatives that the surplus could be used for, or bills that would come about?
Absolutely. Some of the, some of the surplus has already been used to buy down debt, and, and that happened right at the end of the, of the session. I also think that we will be in a scenario where in just a couple of years, not that far out, we'll be back to a point where, where things are pretty close at the end of the fiscal year, not, not seeing as much of a surplus. And those are budget projections, which that's, that's all they are, they're just budget projections that tell us the way the Kansas economy is likely to go. So I think that legislators are very cautious as they think about what the, the next couple of years look like. Certainly, we hear that play out in the, in the appropriations and the Ways and Means committees and their respective subcommittees. That's not always the rhetoric that, that you'll hear in the overall legislative process. We might have just a little bit of some of that federal, those ARPA dollars that still exist. Those, again, also will not be a part of any future, any future budget numbers. So really, right now, I think, I think we're in a good position for, for a cash flow basis. In the past, the state has always borrowed money and, just to pay the bills until the next fiscal year starts, and then they pay that money back through the legislative appropriation process. So again, we're kind of in a, in a good spot, so to speak. I don't know that there's any, there, no spending can occur unless the State Finance Council gets together during the interim to approve the expenditure of those dollars. And I don't foresee anything that's coming to mind, at least immediately, as far as any, any pending expenditures, other than there's still some dollars left in the, in the grant process or the competitive application process for some of those ARPA dollars.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, would you remind me, I, I believe you said it was Mark Hutton, and who were the other two? It was Schmidt, and who was the third?
Bill, Bill Fireborn. So, so Alan Schmidt, Bill Fireborn, and Mark Hutton were the three whose, whose terms expired.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Seeing none. Dick, thank you very much, as always.
You're welcome.
Next item on our agenda is the report by Brett Cooper, president of the Faculty Association.
If you haven't heard, there's an event Monday, we call it the beginning of the fall semester. But actually, some of our colleagues have been, have already started their semester. For example, EMS has students coming in throughout the year. Cosmetology works on a slightly different schedule, so they've already had students for a couple of weeks. So it's more of a, I guess, a ceremonial first day, as it were. But the campus will, has already begun teeming with life, just from staff and faculty coming back from summer recess. The students are slowly trickling onto campus. It is a great time to be here at the college. So what's going on? Faculty are finishing up, they're, putting the finishing touches on their classes. If it hasn't been done by this point, they're in for a busy weekend, as I am. I've got one class squared away and one class that still need to do a bit of work, but summer is for getting stuff ready, as I've said throughout the summer. It's preparing and updating classes is a continual process for our faculty who are amazing professionals. This week, we had Professional Learning Days, which is always a great event. This gives both faculty and staff many, many opportunities at professional development. Many of our faculty attend the various sessions, as well as leading sessions. For example, the Faculty Association Uniserv representative Amanda Glass presented on doing Safe Zone Training for LGBTQIA issues. We'd like to thank Farrell Janab and Rachel Haynes, as well as their staffs, for an amazing week that they've put together, as, as well as all the technical staff. I was just talking to some of them right before this meeting, and they're doing a bang-up job that, they're everywhere, everywhere I've been today, they've been, and everything is run smoothly, so thank you as well to the technical staff. So this week, or I'm sorry, last week, we had our new faculty orientation, which has been traditionally called LENS, I believe it's getting a new name this year. I don't remember what the new name is, but they had a three days of orientation. When I went through this, it was a five-day, full-week fire hose on full of information. Farrell and her staff have worked on making it a little more consumable. LENS, or, I'm sorry, it's not LENS anymore, but the new faculty orientation goes throughout the year. They will meet regularly, I believe monthly, throughout the, the first full year, as they discuss topics about teaching and learning, campus services, things of that nature. So each session will be focused on something that's going to help them be a better, a better professor here. So also what happens is, this is the new faculty's mentorship year. So they are matched with a veteran faculty member who is there as, well, a mentor, obviously, but they're there to help them acculturate into our unique system or, and environment. They're also there to help the new faculty member determine what it is that they want to do and how to help them do that in the best possible manner. Once their, first year is completed, we move into peer review, and peer review is a two-year process, really a year and a half, but this is a, at this point, the candidate for peer review puts together a committee of three faculty members, generally from their area, maybe one from another area. For example, I'm the director of the Math Resource Center, so I had two math faculty, but also the director of the Writing Center on my committee when I went through this several years ago. I, now, I've told you these goals before, I believe in June, but the goals of peer review are to foster cooperation leading to excellence of faculty at the college, to promote collaboration through instructional, collegial, and professional support, and to provide experienced faculty members a voice in faculty employment decisions. Those are kind of the theoretical goals that we all work to attain. At a more practical level, the goals are to help the candidate continue to learn what is involved with being a full-time faculty member. What's expected? What are the norms, the standards? Again, what is expected of them here at the college? This can be discussions about committee work, uses of services, focusing on, we can also focus on teaching pedagogy, working on improving in those areas. And we're And we're also helping the candidate grow in a targeted way. So the, the candidate puts together a list of goals where they want to improve as a professional, and the committee is there to help them do that. So the way this is done is the, the committee meets regularly. The first meeting is to go over the job description. Because here, here is exactly what's expected. What does this mean? What does it mean in your situation? So for me, it was a little bit different because I'm not in the classroom as my, a regular part of my job. But we, we talked about what that means specifically in each faculty member's situation. They also do observations. So the candidate observes their committee members' classes. The committee members observe the candidate's classes. They also, the committee also interviews the students and gets feedback from the students to share with the candidate, to see what are some things that are going well, what are some, where are some opportunities for enhancement. In the third year, this is kind of where everything comes together. So the second year is a, what we call a, I just lost the word, not summative review. That's third year. I'm sorry. But it's a formative, that's the word. It's a formative process in the second year. The third year is the summative review, where they do the, the cross observations, they get the student input again, but then they write a report to the dean for consideration for whether or not to retain the faculty member into a, an associate professor position at the college. Everybody's goal in all of this is improvement, as is the goal across campus. We're all looking to become better at what we do. We're all looking to serve the students the best way we can. Beyond the, once a faculty member moves beyond the probationary period, those first three years, then they're into the non-probationary area, and things are a little bit different there. So for years, we've had an evaluation process that has evolved into a little bit of Kabuki Theater, honestly. It's not much going on. We have checkboxes, so the, the dean checks a box, are you meeting expectations, need improvement, not meeting expectations. There isn't much in the way of dialogue. Our goal for this, we have a task force between faculty and administration that are working on revamping this evaluation process for full-time faculty. Our overall goal is to create a system that fosters constructive conversation between the dean and the faculty member, where they can talk about goals, improving, finding where are the opportunities for improvement, whether it's somebody who's doing a bang-up job and we just think, all right, this is something that is going great, and let, let's see where we can go beyond this. How can we make it even better? Or somebody who's struggling a little bit in, in some areas. And really focusing on what can we do to fill in the gaps, create a better environment for your students? What is going to, what can we make happen to create the best situation for the students? Again, we're always thinking about what's best for the students in all, in all that we do. We understand that this is going to take a lot of conversation, both at the dean's level, with training on how to use the, the new tool that we eventually settle upon, as well as a lot of professional development for the faculty, to understand what is the philosophy behind the, the new system, what everything means, how it's going to work. Because our goal is that when we move to this new system, once it's approved by the trustees and the faculty, that everybody is starting off on the same page, and that we have a mutual understanding about what is expected and what everything means. Lastly, I would just like to acknowledge that there are a lot of leadership changes going on at the college. That's, you know, expected in a large institution such as ours. I would just like to encourage, and I've already talked to the president about this, but, and we're, we're in agreement, that all stakeholders need to be taken into account when we're filling new leadership positions. And obviously, my, my concern is that faculty are included in these, filling these important roles, and that we will be included in that. And we, we trust that that will continue to happen, as it has happened. We, we have the candidates for one of the EVP positions on campus, I believe it's next week, for interviews, and that's, we've already been approached as to what are some questions that we'd like to have answered, participating in the presentations. So we applaud the administration for the inclusion of faculty in the, in these processes, and hopefully that will continue in the future. Further, we hope that the final decisions are always with the, the mindset of looking for a stable future environment. Stability provides an opportunity to build trust, and that is something that is critically important for all parties here. So we encourage you to continue, including all stakeholders, including the faculty, in these vital positions at the college. I guess this is actually my last thing. So I hope you all received the email, I believe it was yesterday. The Faculty Association is hosting our semestral, beginning of semester party at the Quivera Falls Clubhouse, right across the street. You are all invited. This is open to members, FA members, non-members, administration, trustees. It's an opportunity for everybody at the college to kind of drop their formal roles and get to know each other as people. And that, that's something that, once we understand each other as one human to another, we can come back into our structured roles and respect each other and understand better what's, where everybody's coming from. And so I hope you will all consider joining us tomorrow. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Professor. Any questions for Professor Cooper?
I have a general question.
Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. Adjuncts, and I'm not sure that you can speak to that, but do we still have some sort of adjunct orientation?
I would defer to Dr. McLeod for that.
Yes, we do still have not only an adjunct orientation, we still have adjunct certification training. And last night, we actually had the adjunct in-service.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
And I know the, for example, I work with the math department very closely, and their adjunct meeting is tomorrow night. So they do a grade in-service.
And I appreciate that. That sounds probably fairly naive on my part to ask that question. I'm sure that you do.
No, I've, I was an adjunct. I was an adjunct for 10 years at many colleges in the area. And with the exception of one, I was never included in any in-services or any decision-making, any conversations about what was going on at the college. It was basically just make sure you get your syllabus turned in, show up to class, and don't get any complaints.
Sure. I think that was one of the first events that I went to when I became a trustee. We went to the orientation. I know Chair Muzel would have been there with me. He was the chair at the time. And we were able to go and at least, you know, kind of get a glimpse of, of what they did. So thank you very much. Appreciate the report.
Thank you, Trustee Ingram. Trustee Muzel.
Thank, thank you, Brett, for that report. I, I wish I was there in person. I think that what you just talked about is one of the most important things that we do at the college to help ensure student success. And I guess I hope we have a, maybe you could get a follow-up, a little bit of time spent on that in a committee of the whole or retreat, so we could, could, could hear about that, Dr. Bound, from your side, and hear about it, more about it, from Brett's side, so we can figure out the best way to do that kind of evaluation, because I think it's critical as we try to figure out how to serve students better. Thank you, Brett. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustee Muzel. Any other questions for Professor Cooper? I have something, if I may. In Moneyball, with the movie and the book, Mr. Bean faces pushback from traditional scouts. Have you seen the movie?
I've listened to the audiobook, so I haven't seen the movie.
Me too, like 40, 50 times. Performance scouting? Do you recall what that is?
Uh, no, I don't.
It's when, like, through the 80s and 90s, it's when you could, like, look at a player's stats in college or in high school and try to guess or evaluate how well he was going to perform based on batting average, on-base percentage, et cetera. So the scouts didn't like it. The scouts didn't want to change. And so Bean had to push through that, right? And begin using really what amounted to sabermetrics and a different, different metric system to begin living in the market, the environment that they lived in. How does the Faculty Association help us? Innovation is actually right above your head. How does the faculty help us innovate and meet the, the needs of our students?
Well, first of all, we're, we're with the students every day. We know what's going on. They, they talk to us, they confide in us. So we're really, the college is first line of learning about what is it that the students need. Our faculty are consummate professionals. They constantly go to professional development opportu, opportunities, conferences, things of that nature. So they're always looking to improve their own things. As the college is growing in its shared governance model, the Faculty Association hopes to be integrally involved in that, and where we can discuss and have open communication with both faculty members, non-members, adjuncts, administration, trustees. So I believe that the, the, the main thrust of getting to innovative ideas and getting them implemented is open communication between the stakeholders. And we're always, always welcome, welcome an opportunity to participate in that.
I agree. And with respect to the hundreds of other books I've read, I'm also reading The Counterrevolution of 1776: Slave Resistance and the Origins of the United States of America and the Impact that Slavery Had on, on America. So it's important to go back and revise what you're doing, right?
Right.
And find, really, things that are right in front of you that help explain what's going on. Is that correct?
Yes.
I thank you for everything you do. I don't know if there's any other questions. I, I saw you fidgeting, probably nervously wondering what I was going to say. But thank you for your time, Professor Cooper. Any other questions? Thank you, Brett. The next item on our agenda is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Former Chair, Trustee Muzel.
Thank you, Trustee Cross. The receipts for July of 2022 were up a little under 5% over July of 2021, which is a different trend. We have been trending for the year, we're up 15.2%. So there was a, a drop-off rather significant in July with respect to sales tax revenues. The Johnson County Education Research Triangle is funded by 1-8 cents sales tax adopted by the voters in 2008, and is split between the KU Cancer Center, KU Edwards Campus, and the K-State O'Leitha Campus. So I, I don't know what that slowdown means, but it still means we're already significantly ahead of the pace of 2021 and expect that to continue. So our next meeting is on Halloween, October 31st.
Thank you, Trustee Muzel. Any questions for Trustee Muzel and the Johnson County Education Research Triangle? Seeing none. Thank you, Trustee Muzel. The next item on our agenda is for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. The President of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Trustee Ingram.
You know, you're not going to be able to say that very much longer.
I enjoy saying it.
Just so that you know.
Very proud of it.
We do have our next quarterly meeting coming up. It is a week from this, Friday and Saturday, the 26th and 27th of August. We will be meeting at Fort Scott Community College, so I will have a big report next month.
That's where Jason Sudeikis went.
Jason what?
Jason Sudeikis went to Fort Scott.
Oh.
Played basketball there.
I'll take pictures.
It's an important place. Any questions for Trustee Ingram?
I'll find his statue.
I would hope so. Any questions for Trustee Ingram? Seeing none. Thank you, Trustee Ingram. The next item on our agenda is the Foundation Report. Trustee Ratan is not here. In her place is the very capable shoes of Trustee Laura Smith Everett.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Let me navigate really quick. Think I can do this. Okay. Thank you very much. Just over a month ago, we, at the Foundation, got a new Executive Director, Joy Ginsburg, who has been meeting with JCCC staff, Foundation Board members, donors, supporters, and potential donors. Nearly 30 meetings have taken place, and the collective sentiment is that everyone is thrilled to start getting back together to support JCCC students at upcoming events. I know in-person, in particular, for Foundation members is really relished. Gaining new and bringing back lapsed sponsors for Sun Enchanted Evening has also been a priority for July. The Foundation is working to be more active on Facebook and LinkedIn and are making trustees to, sorry, are asking trustees to follow, like, share, and comment on the JCCC Foundation posts, so that it helps spread the word about the work of the Foundation and how community members can be engaged. The Foundation is also excited to announce a partnership with Jeff Hansen Art in the hopes of enhancing the employee payroll-giving campaign, Open Petals Society. Jeff Hansen Art worked with the Small Business Development Center to create their strategic business plan, and creates the partnership for their great success over the years. Any new payroll donors who give at the $3.50 per pay period level, or anyone who has increased by $3.50 per pay period, will receive a very colorful Jeff Hansen Art framable print. The goal is to increase payroll donation participation by 20%. Our scholarship luncheon will be September 13th. The Foundation hosts the scholarship recipients for a luncheon to hear about the impact of scholarships on our students. Stories are shared, and will be shared on social media and on the website. Our Foundation Board Social will be held on August 18th at the Academic Resource Center. Foundation members will have an opportunity to hear from Dr. Bound, Dr. McLeod, Dr. Vins Miller, and, most importantly, from student Susan Lardy, apologize if I butchered that, who will share her story about how the Academic Resource Center has impacted her academic experience at JCCC. We have three upcoming events. The Harvest Dinner benefiting the Center for Sustainability Scholarships is Friday, September 2nd. I know I will be there, and several others on the board will be there. The event is nearly sold out, but there are some tickets still available. You can go to jccc.edu/harvest-dinner. We also have our Lace Up for Learning 5K Run Walk, which is Sunday, October 9th. Proceeds benefit student scholarships. Find details on the Foundation website. And lastly, our Sun Enchanted Evening Gala will be returning in person November 12th. Sponsorships and seats are available at jccc.edu/cse. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Trustee Smith Everett. Any questions for Trustee Smith Everett? I know we, many of us were at the Foundation's social earlier today, so welcome to Joy Ginsburg, Kate Allen, and everyone at the Foundation. Thank you for everything you do. No other questions, comments? Okay.
It's time to start shopping for your gala gear, I will just say. After two years of not having the gala in person, we, we better all look fantastic in November.
Will you text Jennifer?
Yes, I'll let her know. Yes, I'll let her know.
The next item on our report is the report from the Committee of the Whole for the Board. We met on August 1st by Zoom at 8:30 a.m. Dr. Bound, myself, Trustee Ingram, Trustees Laura Smith Everett, Hamill, Musel, and Ratan attended the meeting. Joy Coastin was absent. We had a report on continuing education by Lisa Waldman, who presented a lengthy overview of the Workforce Development and Continuing Education Branch at JCCC. The presentation included a review of the nine program areas in which both open enrollment and customized training are offered, the Small Business Development Program, the Johnson County Adult Education Program, the numerous partnerships and community collaborations in which the branch actively participates. Fiscal year '22 enrollment and revenue numbers were shared, including the review of the Learn financial planning and the budgeting model used by the branch. Finally, enrollment and revenue goals for fiscal year '23 were reviewed, and future branch initiatives and corresponding timelines were identified. Also, Ms. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services and CFO of the college, stated that pursuant to state statute KSA 79-2929, the college is required to publish the Notice of Budget Hearing for the Annual Budget Report in a newspaper at least ten days prior to the budget hearing. The college intends to levy taxes in excess of the revenue-neutral rate in 2022-23. And pursuant to KSA 79-2988, the college is therefore required to publish notice of the revenue-neutral rate hearing on the college website and in a newspaper at least ten days prior to the revenue-neutral rate hearing. The revenue-neutral rate hearing and budget hearing will be held during the Board of Trustees' meeting at 5:00 p.m. on September 15th, 2022. And it is therefore the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize publication of the Notice of Budget Hearing and Revenue Neutral Rate Hearing for the 2022-2023 budget. And I would entertain a motion, please.
I'll second.
I'll move, you'll second?
I will.
Okay. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. And the motion passes unanimously. The next item we discussed was presented about an Evergy easement recommendation from Tom Hall, Associate Vice President for Campus Services and Facility Planning, provided information on a recommendation related to the renovation of the Science Building, which necessitates that JCCC grant a non-exclusive easement to Evergy, the right of ingress and egress through JCCC property for the construction, repair, and maintenance of infrastructure for electric energy, which will extend an existing easement to allow for the construction, repair, and maintenance of a new transformer to connect to such infrastructure. It's just exciting, that means we can do the things we need to do. The administration has worked with Evergy and a surveyor to appropriately define the easement rights. Evergy will vacate an unneeded portion of the existing easement following the filing and recording of this proposed easement. It is therefore the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the grant of a non-exclusive easement necessary for the electric energy infrastructure for the Science Building, and that the Board authorize the President to execute the necessary documentation to grant such an easement and to take other action necessary and appropriate to effectuate the same. And I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded by Trustee Coastin. Any discussion?
Mr.?
Yes, Trustee.
I just wanted clarification, and I did reach out to Tom Hall, that this comes at no additional cost to us.
I didn't know that.
Just to clarify that.
Did you tell me you did that?
I would have told the President that I was calling Mr. Hall.
Thank you.
The costs are all budgeted as a part of the science lab projects, so there's no additional cost above that.
Thank you for letting us know. Any other?
Well, I wanted everyone else to know, too.
I think I said us, I thought I said pronoun us. Thank you for letting us know, let me revise and extend my remarks. Trustee Laura Smith Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't like the way the camera works. I had a clarifying question that I had not noticed in Committee of the Whole. Could somebody just clarify what the "non-exclusive" means?
I'm going to defer to our counsel, Kelsey Nazar. Let me take a crack, can I? Since, you know, I'm Chair of the Board. I believe it means that they have the right... Excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Hall, would you like to address the issue?
Yes, what it means is that we can still use the property where it's located, so they don't have exclusive use, so we can still go on that property.
Okay, thank you. I figured it was simple, I just needed to have someone smarter than me identify that. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment? That's it, that was a good job. So, any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Next, we have single-source purchase, the single-source purchase report of $150,000 or greater from the August 22 Committee of the Whole report. With respect to infrastructure, as you can read on your board packet right there, I'm just going to read the recommendation. Is it necessary I read every last word?
Just the recommendation?
Recommendation, fine. I concur. It is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to infrastructure? Instructure?
Instructure.
How about that? For the three-year license subscription of $663,282.75, and I would so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any discussion? Trustee Smith?
Trustee Cross, just for the point of the vote, I believe we've lost Trustee Musel over these last three votes, so it should be noted that he has not been here to vote, just for the record.
Doctor?
I haven't...
I thank you, I had not noticed, I thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think that's why there's seven of us, so we can see everything. So it's not unanimous, it would be, what then, four zero?
Six.
Five zero?
Yes, yeah. Just for clarification, my apologies for...
That's okay. What is the difference between instructure and infrastructure? I don't know.
I was curious the same thing.
Instructure is the name of the actual LMS company. Infrastructure is more around harder related information. So the name of the company is Instructure.
Gotcha.
Through the contracts, we'll see now.
Thank you very much. What a staff you have, that's great. Any other comments or questions about the recommendation? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed?
Again, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, now Trustee Musel is back for this vote. I just wanted to clarify for the minutes, for the sake of the minutes. So he is here for this vote.
I don't hear a no, so I'm going to say the motion passes six oh.
Seven.
Those opposed? No. Six.
Six. Oh, sorry. Yep, I can't count, just, I'll let you be Chairman, and I'll just notify you of what I see on the sidelines, please, excuse me.
I lost my place, I don't know where I was. Did I ask for a no? Let's start over. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes six oh. I appreciate it, Trustee Smith Everett, I just, I try to get on a rhythm, and I get off. The next item we have is an item to end ed-to-go, and it is the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to ed-to-go for an estimated amount of $150,000. And I would so move.
I'll second.
The motion has been moved by myself and seconded by Trustee Ingram. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed? The motion passes six to zero. The next item we have is a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole that the Board accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source... Excuse me. To accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the single-source justification to ProTrain for an estimated amount of $150,000. And I so move.
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded by Trustee Laura Smith Everett. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 And those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes six to zero. Informational items, there were no questions raised regarding the informational items provided in the Committee of the Whole packet, and therefore, fellow trustees and dear administration, that concludes the report of the Committee of Whole. The working agenda can be found on the subsequent pages in the board packet, and thank you for your time on that. The next item we have on our agenda is the President's Recommendations for Actions, beginning with the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board packet includes the preliminary unaudited Treasurer's Report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Some items of note include on page one, the general post-secondary technical educational fund summary. The total fiscal 2022 general fund revenues were 2% higher than in fiscal 2021 due to higher property tax revenue resulting from increases in valuation in Johnson County. The general fund expenses for fiscal 2022 were 16% higher than in fiscal 2021. The increase was primarily related to the budget cost of the science lab renovation project. The general fund unencumbered cash balance was $113 million as of June 30th, 2022, and expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. It is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended June 30th, 2022, subject to audit, and I will make that motion.
The motion has been moved, is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Trustee Laura Smith Everett and seconded by Trustee Mark Hamill. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 And those...
Aye.
Those opposed? I believe the motion passes six to nothing. The next item we have on our agenda is the monthly report to the Board by President Dr. Andy Ben.
Well, good evening. I have my monthly report for you. Earlier in the meeting, you had the opportunity to spend time with Maria Palazuelas, and thank you for spending time with her and the questions. I know she was very much looking forward to coming and spending time with all of you this evening. All right, we're going to jump into my report, and we'll jump, whoop, there we go. We're going to talk enrollment here for a few minutes, and then I have a series of updates as we begin to launch the school year, as was shared earlier in the meeting this evening. So, if we look at our continuing ed enrollment for the summer, they have all but finished the summer. There may be a little bit of movement, but it would be mostly what you could count on two or three hands. So we're pretty close to locked in for summer enrollment for continuing ed at about 3,532, which is 141% of goal. As, so again, they have wrapped up certainly this past fiscal year, and summer continues into this new fiscal year as well, with what has been a rock-solid year from an enrollment standpoint. We'll talk about fall in continuing education enrollment in just a moment. If we look at credit enrollment, we are down 4.5% in headcount and 2.7% in credit hours. For all of us, but especially for our new trustees, I thought you might, I'd like to look at a dip in the chart that happens right about two-thirds of the way across the chart, and that is the date that we drop students who are registered for the fall semester who have not yet paid for their courses, or what we refer to as drop date. And that happened on Tuesday. And so those students can, they're dropped, they've been notified many times prior to that, that they have a bill that's due by that, by 6 o'clock on Tuesday. Nonetheless, every year, students haven't made that payment, and so they're dropped, their courses are dropped. That is a very traditional practice within higher education, certainly within the community college world, but they can start to re-enroll later on that evening. Historically, we've had in a given fall semester, depending on if you look at small, spring semesters, it can range a little bit more than this, but usually in the 12% to 13% range are dropped for non-payment. This year, thanks to the incredible work of teams across the college, that drop was 9.5%. And so, I just, I thank you to everyone who's been involved in that from across the college. Historically, we re-enroll about 55% of the students who were dropped. And so as of this morning, we have, and so we're now talking two days later, less than two days later, we've recovered 26%. So we're almost halfway of where we would expect in a typical drop re-enrollment cycle. If we do look at our students for this semester, where we're up, we are up about 5% in Hispanic or Latino students, and we are up about 2% in first-time students. We are just over flat with full-time students and with traditional aged male students. And we're up 2% in 17 and under, so students who are typically high school students, we're up about 2% there. Our developmental ed courses are up, particularly math is up 11%, and writing courses are up 3%. I would bet there are a number of factors contributing to that, everything from what's experienced, have experienced over the last couple of years with COVID, and also pent-up demand for remedial courses. We've certainly seen a decline in the past two years.
We have a growing demand now?
I think so, I think so. And then we're up in English and math classes overall, 2% or 3% respectively. Where we're down, we're down about 7% in part-time students, we're down in metro-rate students, we're down about 14% out-of-state students, 11% in non-degree-seeking students. There's about a 2% difference in female and male students, and we're down in female students in the 22 to 24 and 25 and above categories.
So that's...
Yeah.
Females 18 to 20.
Females 18...
Sorry, didn't...
That's okay. We are, I gotta get to where that is on our report. Female students 18 to 21, we were down about 3%.
Thank you.
So, enrollment's not where we want it, but our teams are working hard. What we're also seeing, and I haven't had a chance to talk to any about this, we got the report earlier today, we're up noticeably in late, in students taking late starting courses, 21%. courses, 21%, I believe. So that's a phenomenon that is interesting to me.
Do you think that that just is because they finally said, "Oh, dear, I better do something"?
I
Wait a minute.
Yes, I think that's a part of it, but I also believe that, I mean, look, we know that community college students are known for registering late into the process and deciding to come to school later in the summer than we'd like. We'd like them all to make decisions in February and March, and maybe as late as June, and once you start getting to July, and certainly into August. We know the closer you register to the start of the semester, if you're a first-time student that has a -- that the data would support that they don't do as well as students who have registered and are, have made the commitment earlier on in the process, because they're rushing to get things done.
That's a pretty big jump in that number, and
Yeah.
Just suggests to me that
It is, yeah.
It's finally, people are finally waking up and going, "Wait a minute, the lull is over, I better get back to it."
That's part of it. It also may be that the offerings that happen at that time of the year, that there's a group of students that were ready for those courses. So there are a variety of reasons that lead to that, but that was something that jumped out at me in the report this morning.
I just wanted to point out anecdotally that Attorney General Schmidt attended Independence Community College, so sometimes some of those late bloomers, they come on.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I was a, I was registered to go to, or set to go to a college, and two weeks before, they told me my financial aid was cut by a significant amount, and I had to make a last-minute change to go to, to go to a school that I could afford to go to. And so we know, again, it isn't always the result of poor planning or anything else. Sometimes that's the reality of life, and students make last-minute choices. And again, I want to express my appreciation to our team across the college in the way that they are engaging students, whether they come to us in February or March, or they come to us in July and August. So, yeah. And I see trustee Musil has his hand up.
Dr. Bann, my question is, I may have missed, and I want to make sure I was clear. Are these students registering to start Monday but are registering later than we thought? Or are they registering for later starting classes that we might start in September or October? I was unclear.
Yes and yes.
Okay.
Trustee Musil, yes and yes. They are, there are certainly students who are registering later than we would wish they would register, and there are students who are registering for classes that are what I would call late starting classes.
Well, how did, how does, where does the 9% come from? Both of those pools?
The 9%?
I think it's 9% more were registering late?
21.
That's 21.
The 21% I was referring to that are registering for late starting classes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Trustee
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Musil. Trustee Smith Everett, sorry, Dr. Bann.
As usual, trustee Musil's questions have led to a question for me. So how, how many of those late starting courses do we offer? Like, and what's the range of courses?
Dr. McLeod, would you like to take a stab at that?
Sorry, Dr. McLeod, thank you.
Not a problem. Late start courses tend to be somewhere in the range. We generally have about 8,000 to 10,000 sections of general courses running in any given semester. So you're talking somewhere around about 200 general sections, and that's any late start, whether that be a 12-week, an eight-week, or a four-week section. And that is across the board. We have a number of different classes. Some are mathematics, some are English, it's a smattering in pretty much every department.
And Dr. McLeod is our chief academic officer for everyone watching at home. Anything further? Trustee Smith Everett?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And then if we look at, if you will, our continuing education enrollment for fall, realize in the continuing ed world, enrollment happens throughout the semester, or throughout, throughout the fall season. So it started, and it will continue because their classes are starting all the time. We are at about 18% of the goal for the year, and we are at, let's see, four students more than we had last year at this point in time. So we know that while we saw tremendous enrollment levels this past year for continuing ed, we know that this year is going to take a lot of work to, and again, they worked hard last year, but it's going to take a lot of work to realize the sort of numbers that they've set out there as a goal for themselves for this year. So while last year I repeatedly gave Alisa Waldman and the team a hard time for sandbagging, I'm confident this year that they're going to be working really hard to hit these goals. So anyways, part, I mean, part of that certainly is relative to the COVID relief funding that happened and access that, the way that we marshaled the resources to make training available for those that couldn't afford it, to incentivize businesses and individuals to go after the training that they could while we had the funding available to support them. So certainly impacted the enrollment for last year. Okay? All right. All right, let's talk about a few updates. Before I get into the updates, I'm actually going to jump down to the fourth bullet point on here, and that is, as you are aware, Vice President Dr. Leslie Harden left us, and I have asked Colleen Chandler to step into the role of interim Vice President for Human Resources. She's on the line with us tonight. She said I would, I would love to be there at the meeting, but we just made the announcement this week, and she said I'm balancing, well, we're all balancing, right, of work and family and school and whatnot. So she's online with us, and I want to say thank you to Colleen and to the HR team for stepping up as we move forward. The other items on the list, from a sunset of verb, we have, I'll be able to provide more of an update to you, or we will be able to provide, perhaps Colleen can do that next month, provide an update in terms of, did we have faculty members who have chosen to retire and utilize the verb at mid-year? We don't typically see many retirements from faculty during the middle of the year, but we'll know that at the end of the day tomorrow, if there's faculty members who are taking, utilizing that option. Otherwise, we'll continue to move forward, and we now begin the process of, it's a six-month lead time for notification, with notifications needing to happen by the end of the, like the end of the calendar year for anybody who wants to utilize verb at the end of the fiscal year, or anywhere between six months from that date and, and the end of the fiscal year effective July 1 of '23. Our HR team is working to partner with those inside and outside of the college to make sure that we're providing our employees, our faculty and staff with the information they need to make well-informed decisions as they move forward. Second item on the list is the compensation table. That work has wrapped up, right? It was a transition, we talked about that last month. And again, I want to say that, keep in mind, and I know you've heard it repeatedly, and we talked about the 5,700 or so calculations that went into living out or carrying out that table and that transition, there were 61 corrections that were made in this process. So of concerns that were raised, there were a total of 61. If we equate that to a percentage, that's just over 1% of all of the calculations resulted in a question that needed a correction that went with it. The career laddering work, we are working right now, HR team, now Colleen taking the lead on it, to develop a relationship with an external partner who will come alongside us to help us lay out all of the analysis and work that would happen to stand up, the career laddering work as we move forward. Certainly, as I said last month, doing so, bringing in an outside partner does, I think, two things for us. One, it allows us to expedite the process more quickly than what our HR team can do. And secondly, it also, not only with the skills of our HR team, but with those outside the college, it also gives us an objective look to make sure that what we're doing aligns to the best practices around this work. So there'll be, we'll have more for you next month regarding a career laddering partner. We are also in the time of year where we will remember when you pass the budget, or actually the benefit plan for this past, for the current fiscal year that we're in, we said that there would be an open enrollment period yet this fall for healthcare benefits starting January 1. And so you'll receive information in the month of September, and we'll discuss what that looks like for approval in either the September or early, the Board meetings both in September and October come, in September it's the 15th, so that is the third, Thursday of the month, that happens to be the earliest, the Thursday can happen, and then in October it happens the 13th. And so the HR team is working to pull together with procurement to bring that forward for you. And so, again, I want to express my appreciation for the HR team stepping up. This will be a period of transition, and I don't think I said this, but I will say it now, it is not my intent that we would, it is my intent that we would not start a search process for the nice, next Vice President of Human Resources until after at least the end of the fall semester. What are we really talking about? It wouldn't happen before the first of the year. We're not going to launch a search in late December because it won't get any attention. So, anything, any questions related to HR items?
Yeah, so, and I appreciate the update, and we kind of talked about this
Trustee Ham.
Oh, thank you so much. We talked here yesterday about some of the HR concerns and just the heavy workload going through and the change, and so I am thankful you addressed a few more of those issues. There's still a lot to go through
There is.
Heavy workload, and it sounds like, you know, everybody's ready for it, but, and you kind of mentioned it too, I would love to get a good update here, especially next few months, every single month we possibly can, so it sounds like you're going to have that plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Trustee Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you go back over the outside career laddering partner? What, what are you envisioning?
Yep, so we're envisioning a consulting firm that that's what they, that's one of the areas that they specialize in.
Okay.
That specialize in developing compensation and career laddering, career progression programs for others, to bring in that external expertise.
So you see this is more of a team who would come in and assist us?
I think that's what we're trying to figure out.
Okay.
We've, there is one firm that they are looking most closely at. There have been two or three other firms that they've been looking at as well, so they're in the process of, of working through that from a procurement standpoint, and would bring that forward.
So they've already been looking at that?
They are, it is well underway.
Because if I remember correctly, on your slides last month, it said something to the effect of, and I just wrote it down, any changes were not, but any changes coming forward would not have been included in this year's budget. Is that correct for this particular?
I think that, no, I think that's related to another item, and I think that's related to the, if there's a follow-up to the verb
Okay.
That that didn't have specific dollar amounts. We have budgeted $500,000 in this year's budget for career laddering.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that clarification. The other thing, and I think, you know, Mark, when you were talking about all the different things that have occurred, I know in the past, there has been some sort of a, something that we could have and see and observe, so that we kind of had a rolling idea of month to month where we were. I mean, we're talking about six months
On the roll.
No, 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 on, on HR
Yep.
And how we're moving forward, just because of the magnitude of the work that's being done, and the fact that it just touches probably everyone on this campus at some level. And I think to, you know, provide some confidence and the trust, you know, that we're listening, we're hearing, we're moving forward, you know, I think we really need something that we can have in hand.
I would be happy to work with, with interim Vice President Chandler to help develop a
Sure.
A work plan, so you can see what does the plan look like as we progress through, through the semester and through the year ahead.
And I don't, you know, I don't know, it seems to me, you know, when Dr. Larson was here, when we were looking at the verb at the time, maybe we had something that showed kind of the implementation process and some dates.
Yep.
You know, if you find that to be helpful, I think we would appreciate
Okay.
A little more information. So, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ingram. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to welcome Colleen to this level. She's been with us for many years, and I have gotten to meet her and had many presentations from her in the past. Welcome her to this role and interim, and thank her, because as we have all mentioned tonight, there's a tremendous amount of work that HR took on, and I think we all could see the value in it and knew it was important, but it's still a lot of work nonetheless. I also just wanted to thank Dr. Harden for her time at JCCC. No institution of this size is easy, and I know there were several times that I myself, as a member of this board, asked some pretty tough questions, and Dr. Harden did a stellar job of explaining, sometimes multiple times for those of us that take a couple rounds to get it, what was going on and why these things were being done. So I wanted to thank her for her time at JCCC, and I look forward to hearing more about what HR is going to do in the future. And I agree with trustee Ingram's comments that I think having it in a written form helps me. I tend to need to read something and take time to process it, and that would be really beneficial. So thank you for that, and that concludes my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee Smith Everett. Trustee Ham.
The last thing I do have is the turnover. I couldn't remember if we talked about that last time at the last meeting. Okay.
I'll get that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Did you have that to address, sorry?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Bann? I have a few
Yep.
If I may.
Yep.
And, because I'm a fairly self-aware politician who just killed a gnat. Sorry.
I can vouch for that.
I think Dr. Bann can assure you that I'm somewhat critical and grill him in private, and I just wanted to say thank you to Leslie Harden for being here. We are sorry to see you go, and we appreciate the time that you were here. I think Colleen Chandler would be very capable. I echo trustee Ingram and Smith Everett in that. But wasn't Leslie Harden just hired last year?
She was hired in January of '21, yes.
Okay. Why are we waiting till after the first of the year to do a hire?
I think there's a certain amount, when there's transition in a leadership role over an area, especially in an area that is working through many different priorities from, we've talked about several of them tonight, that it will be beneficial to them to solidify themselves as a team and to move forward with these priorities. Bringing in somebody new right away may create more transition for them as a department, and frankly, you know, we all have, and I'm confident in their ability, we also have high expectations for the work coming out of that department in the next year, and, and I think the department feels, I can't speak for them completely, but in my conversations with them, some of them individually, and when I met with them on Monday, they're interested in a certain amount of consistency, and they know they've got a lot of work to do, and they feel ready to take it on. And I think introducing someone new right away may actually slow them down as they try to move this work forward.
The issue's been raised, and I'm soft on Andy Bann, so I'm trying to diplomatically raise some difficult questions, and I do love confrontation. I like saving my bullets. And I do support you, and this administration has my trust and confidence. I'm just saying, some of us do pay attention. We see and hear more some of us do pay attention. We see and hear more things than we ever bring up.
Absolutely.
And I'm not sure I told you today, actually, I did talk to Randy Weber today.
Mm-hmm.
I called him. And I want to thank him and everyone that was here and got us through COVID. I think that, though we've had some differences, some of us pointedly, we appreciate you immensely. And I think the rest of the county, we need your help. Enrollment's not just us and, and everyone here. We need the county and all the stakeholders, and for the 3% to 5% of the county watching this, and you know who you are, we need your help, Senator Baumgartner and all of you. So I think it's COVID. I think it's a tremendously tumultuous time. To listen to financial news is incredible. Some people say it's a bear market. Some people say it's a bull market. I swear to everybody's side, just sells stuff accordingly. So I see there's two hands raised. I'll be quiet. But I did want to say that, I think people can read between the lines here in terms of what I'm saying, judging by Kelsey Nazar's smirk on her face. But I sometimes wonder how I'm doing. And then I look at Kelsey Nazar, and I'm like, oh, maybe it's time to be quiet. So I'm making fun of myself. I'm just, Trustee Musel had his hand first, then Trustee Smith Everett.
Yes, Dr. Bound, on, on the hiring timing, is there also an issue with simply the academic year and the ability to recruit the right candidate when we're already, every community college is at the start, where we'd probably get our next Vice President for Human Resources? Everybody is starting right now. And it, I know when we, when we looked at hiring a president, we, we know there's a particular time of year to advertise. Is that, does that go into your calculus?
Somewhat, but I think more than anything, it's about giving the HR team the room to breathe and to get focused on the work ahead. And frankly, my confidence in, in Colleen's ability to move us forward. Certainly, you know, at, at the startup of an academic year, startup of an academic semester, all eyes at every institution are on where they need to be, and that's getting the semester or getting the year up and running. Although I would say from an HR standpoint, it is, you know, probably not an area that is immediately impacted by the start of the semester that would prevent somebody from looking at an opportunity. You certainly wouldn't look for a chief academic officer. You wouldn't look for a chief student affairs officer, you know, right in the throes of starting the semester. And again, I don't mean to, I am not discounting the work of HR in helping us accomplish what we need to do. They're a critically important department in helping us identify, recruit, hire, and onboard employees across the college. So that work is critically important. But I don't know if it's as directly tied to the academic year as some other positions may be within the college.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Musel. Trustee Smith Everett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to echo, I have the same question about the transition to HR. And after talking to Dr. Bound about it, and further reflection about it, I wanted to speak from sort of the employee standpoint. I am an educator with Shining Mission Schools, and Dr. Mike Fulton was a superintendent who resigned last year and left the district after extensive three-year process of developing a strategic plan. And there was a lot of apprehension about a new leader coming in and changing a lot of what was already laid, the found work, the foundation that was already laid. And we, in the, the board of Shining Mission Schools ended up hiring a assistant superintendent to become our current superintendent. And at the beginning of this school year, my principal commented on how grateful she and other principals have been that there was no change, that the continuity of the plans that had been laid were going to be able to see, be seen and followed through because the leadership was going to be consistent, and there wasn't going to be a complete change in priorities and approach. And I just want to echo that I think Dr. Bound is making a really, really smart decision for the benefit of both the staff of the HR department as well as employees who interact with HR. And that it's important for continuity's sake that we see out some of these big initiatives, some of which are part of our strategic plan, as I was reminded last night with Dr. Bound in our one-on-one. So that we have, we aren't trying to change, pull the rug out from underneath people in the midst of what has already, a lot of work that has already started. So I just wanted to echo my support for that decision, Dr. Bound, in that I can see the wisdom in it. And from the employee's standpoint, I think that it offers a lot of ease of anxiety when you have a leader who has already been there and knows what the plans were and can execute them, as I believe Colleen can. And so I really appreciate that she's going to lead us through that. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Trustee. Any other, go ahead, sorry.
Nope. I have a couple more items under my.
Yes, sir.
But if there are other questions, I'll.
No, I just wanted to make sure, yes, sir, please do so.
Okay. All right. We're going to keep going. And a couple other items. First of all, just some update on some key searches. Again, this is also work that, it comes from the HR department, but also from many people across the college. The CIO, Chief Information Officer, final interviews are scheduled for next week. We have three finalists that will be interviewed and engaged across campus in a variety of ways. Following shortly thereafter are the Executive Vice President for Student Succession Engagement. That process, final round interviews, three candidates as well, start on August 31st and wrap up a week later. I am pleased to inform you that Heather Callaway has accepted the offer that we extended to be our next Director of Internal and Audit and Advisory Services. And we're very pleased to have her come on board. And I think you'll enjoy working with her. She's got a big, a big job to step into with, with high expectations, and she's very excited about it. Final one on, on my list is our Athletic Director, Tony Tompkins. Will start with us tomorrow. He comes to us from Kansas City, Kansas Community College, has a, a long history of, of coaching, and for the last several years has led athletics at Kansas City, Kansas Community College. And we're excited to have him join us as well. And I thank you for the efforts that have happened around those searches. So that's, and then I have one last slide after that. So one of.
Yep. Trustee Ingram has a question on hires.
No, go ahead, do your last slide. That's fine.
Excuse me. I misunderstood.
Okay. Then the last thing I have on mine for my report, and I, I met with each of you within the last week or so. And then also, this stems from our conversation last month, there are my performance review of identifying goals for me to work on, and therefore us as a college to focus on. I would propose to you four goals. The first is to ensure that we have a strategic enrollment management plan in place. This is about how you get very deliberate about enrollment. It necessitates the hard work of, of this college to make that happen. In particular, you know, there are, are several areas of the college that need to work effectively with this work. Academic Affairs, the Student Success and Engagement Team, but it also draws heavily on our marketing and Strategic Communications Team, as well as from an IS and technology standpoint, because all of these things integrate for an effective plan. This would allow us to impact, it's not like everything waits till a year from now to make it happen, but it is a six-month planning process to really do it and do it right. We've had a strategic enrollment team and management plan in place in the past, and, and we really need to reengage in that work to instill everyone's confidence in, in our very targeted effort of how we go about enrollment here at the college. Does that mean that we go from where we are today to 20,000 students? I don't think it means that, but it, it would be intended to, to stem the, the erosion of enrollment that we've had in recent years. The second goal is related to the relationship with our Johnson County Public Schools in particular. It doesn't include the privates, but the heavy focus in this year would be with our six local school districts and working specifically with the superintendents and deepening our partnership with them and the high schools that results in increased access, opportunities for students to be here, and smooth transition between us. The next is engaging with healthcare, with education, with our municipal partners and business leaders, and making sure that I and we together understand what their needs are from a workforce standpoint, and continuing to align the work of our programmatic areas to meet their needs. Finally, the last goal focuses in on really, in, in keeping us focused on our strategic plan and the priorities within that plan, and focused in on our mission of inspiring learning to transform lives and strengthen communities, that we do that each and every day in what we do, but doing so in a way that engages our faculty, staff, our cabinet, and our college departments. We know that, that these last few months have been rough, and, and we've got to work to strengthen the team and to instill the confidence we have in each other to move forward as a college. And it would be my recommendation that those would be the goals that you would hold me accountable to in this, in this academic, in this year that we're in now. I'm happy to answer any questions on that. And, and if you're comfortable with those, I would ask for your formal support of those. And if you say we want more time to work through it, that would be fine as well. But I, the sooner we get these not figured out, and you can hold me accountable to, the more time and attention we can put to carrying these out. So be happy to answer any questions related.
Thank you, President Bound. I will say that you and I spent some time on these, and I know Trustee Ingram had some input. In, in large measure, I asked you to draft your own goals. So that's, that's on me, and I appreciate the time and effort you put into it. So I just wanted to say that. I, I don't know who was first here. I saw Trustee Coaston first, then I have Trustee Musel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say thank you for all the explanations you've just given us, not only regarding the HR department, but also your goals for this year. I wonder, can you maybe speak to how, what metrics you'll use or present to us that might help us understand how you're proceeding to achieve these different goals?
Absolutely. And so as I look at, at each of these, there are also metrics built within the strategic plan that are already in place, or will be in place. So when I think about Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, that should be impacting retention, and it should be impacting enrollment. We're not going to see those numbers grow as a result of this work directly this year, but they will be the, the trailing metrics that come from this work. I think.
I interrupted you real quick.
Yeah.
Trustee Musel needs to leave. Do you want to go real quick, Greg?
That would be fine. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say I approve of these goals, Dr. Bound. And they're, they're broad goals, and, and some of them are heavy lifts. And I just think within all of these goals needs to be a focus or commitment on finding, as part of the strategic plan, how to reimagine Johnson County Community College, because none of these specifically address the structural imbalance, the budgetary imbalance that I had talked about before and see, see coming. They can't be solved simply by enrollment. But I, I do very much appreciate the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. And I'm going to have to drop off to go to a meeting here in Abilene, Kansas. But I, if, if I were around for the vote, I would vote yes. Thank you. Apologize for having to leave.
Thank you, Trustee Musel. I interrupted you.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. In, in response to, to your questions, Trustee Coaston, I think when I look at that first one, I think much of that is going to be milestones of, are the major components of that goal accomplished. So, you know, selecting the partner, getting the right people involved, conducting the training, developing the plan, having an actionable plan in place to live out this plan, its impact on subsequent year enrollment activities. If I look at the relationship with the superintendents, I think one of the metrics is the regularity with which I meet with the superintendents to develop, to continue to enhance those relationships, and new ideas and initiatives that come from that, to build on the work that's happening as a college. I think the, the third is really around measuring the activity of frequency, again, that I'm meeting with these, and bringing back recommendations and, and responses to those recommendations that may be programming, that may be finding new ways to address their needs as employers, and also strengthening the enrollment in our programs in those areas. And then finally, I'm going to take the last one and say that ties back heavily into the strategic plan implementation, and particularly the, the measures of, around engagement.
Good. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm glad you haven't had any historical things to deal with while you've been here.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Bound?
For what, Mr. Chair? We're going to move on? Or, I, I do have one, but I wanted to make sure that you were finished.
Do I keep forgetting you?
I'm, I'm.
Okay.
That's fine.
Are we voting on that now?
I, that's.
Or is this something we're going to discuss?
I'm asking you to consider. And you can decide whether you want to do it now, or you want to push to next month, or whatever.
I'm fine with voting on it now. I, I don't, I don't know, do we need to give notice before?
No, you can, I mean, you would need a motion.
You need a motion and a second.
Okay. I would prefer to wait. I mean, I have a few more questions before, but I, you know, whatever you want to do.
I don't disagree. In my mind, notice would make some sense. May I ask your reasoning?
You, there's a few things that, that I was kind of thinking about, some of the different categories, but we'd want to make sure that, you know, it's, this job is obviously very difficult, and you're hitting a lot of people in the entire county. And most of this is, they're important goals we picked, and most of them are around enrollment. But there are other aspects, and I think Greg kind of mentioned some of that too, with the budgeting. And, you know, so we have, you know, requirements, we should be focusing on our students, obviously, our employees, our businesses, our taxpayers, and everybody in the county. And I think we kind of should have some kind of a goal that definitely hits on all of those well and thoroughly.
Yep.
So we might have a little bit more discussion on that.
Okay. I, I think I'm fine with that. I think, I don't want any appearance that we're trying to rush these through.
I don't either.
So I thank you for taking the time to draft them and then brief us on them tonight.
Mr. Chair, I think one of the other things for me at this point is, you know, you did mention that you have shared this with all the other trustees, so they are on board with it?
That trustees have to define if they're on board with that or not. My job was providing with the information. I did not receive feedback that would lead me to believe that they, that individuals as trustees, that, that you're not pleased with these as options, but certainly my goal was not to try and understand exactly where everybody was and try to build some consensus.
And that's fine. I think that under the circumstances, though, we are missing three trustees, and maybe it might be wise to wait, make sure that they have it. And, and in fact, that was going to be one of my comments. You know, I love the report that you give, but I would love, you know, to receive it maybe the day after somehow, so that we've got it, so that we can refer back to it. Because, you know, I think there's, it seems to me like, you know, maybe a year ago, we were actually receiving hard copies when we got to our desk. And that, it was just kind of nice to be able to make notes on it and to add our own.
Yep.
So.
Easily done. Next month.
Yeah. And I think if we just advise the other trustees that this will be part of the meeting, then they know that.
I think among our group of seven, we've had some issues, illnesses, and it's been summer.
Oh, sure.
So I'm perfectly fine waiting. I, I do want to just voice that I plan to endorse and support the goals. And I, I thank you for the time, because we spent some time, and I have, I guess, nine-plus years now. It still doesn't mean I know exactly what a president does. I have some good idea. And I, I think they're good and fine goals. I agree with Trustee Musel. I just wanted to say, while setting it over, I just want to give anybody's any opportunity to raise issues, to raise them. So I think we should add it to the agenda next.
We will add it to next month's agenda. We will add it to next month's agenda.
Is it okay with you, if I ask, if there's any other questions?
Sure.
Any other questions for Dr. Bound? Are you finished? I'm sorry. I'm done. Okay. Any other questions for Dr. Bound?
Laura Smith Everett also dropped off.
I believe she did, and I think that's what Trustee Ingram is referring to. There's only four of us here in the moment, so I don't want to rush four goals through. And I think it's appropriate, we have some time to have notice and then comment on next month.
Very comfortable with that.
Okay, wait, 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 wait. Trustee? Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Bound, for your monthly report to the board. The next item on our agenda is new business, which we sort of just hashed through. Is there any items of new business for the good of the order?
Sure.
Seeing none. The next item on our agenda is old business. I do not believe we have any old business. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda in your board packet from about pages 19 through 27 or so. Are there any items the trustees would like to individually address? Just the four of us, huh? I don't need to look at that screen.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to make a couple of comments about the consent agenda.
Sure, please do so. How about this? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So...
Any second.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Trustee Ingram.
Thank you. Well, you know, I think because so many of these items are routine, I just wanted to take a moment to pull out and not pull out prior to a vote. I don't want to vote on them separately, but I want to recognize or add some attention to the grants, the contracts, awards, retirement tribute benefits, the affiliation, articulation, and reverse transfer. And there's just a lot going on there. And I really appreciate all the work that goes in, particularly with the grants and the contracts and awards. And I was looking at them this month, and I actually took a little count of almost $1.5 million in funding to this college. And just a little bit over, as far as a match, there are a number of them that have no match whatsoever. And one of them that did have the match was, let me see, the Adult Education Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act grant, which was about $284,000. But the total of the matches were just right at $300,000. And so I did call to find out why we had that match, and if you would share that, the 284,000? Where are we going?
Please.
Sure. Oh, sorry to bring you up. But I was just really impressed, and I think sometimes we forget how much money and the work that goes into writing the grants and pulling that all together, and that, the affiliations and all the work that is done to make this place tick, so.
Well, thank you for pointing it out, Trustee Ingram. I'm Elisa Waldman, Vice President of Workforce Development and Continuing Education. So in that case, with the JCAE, the Adult Education Grant, that is a grant where we have to match 50, up to 50% or more of the federal component of that grant. The grant that you see is a combination of federal and state monies. So the amount that we're matching is 50% of the federal portion of that.
All right.
And if I may, the Grant and Leadership Department, led by Melinda Bryan Smith and Anthony and Selena, are amazing. And all of our departments do a tremendous amount to provide them with information, but they pull this together beautifully.
Oh, absolutely. And there is nothing negative about my comments whatsoever. I just, when I looked at the amount that we'd received, which was 759,000, and then we had that match of 284,000, I thought there's a good reason for that. And so I really learned something about that and how it was a match for federal dollars up to 50%. So, you know, I just wanted to point that out, because I think sometimes you might look at those things and think, you know, is that coming out of our fund? What's going for? And I just, I just wanted to share that with everyone.
And that's very typical on the federal grants.
Right, right.
So oftentimes, I like to explain it that, you know, we're getting a full program for a third of the cost or some percentage of the cost.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I've got a question for Elisa, if I may. The 759,000, right, I guess 465 is federal. That is due to the administration, right, the Department of Education, but also our congressional delegation will have a hand in helping direct that. That's been my experience. Is that right?
I don't know the answer to that. It's actually through the Department of Labor.
Oh, Labor, yes.
It's Department of Labor, and then it flows through the Kansas Board of Regents. So they actually administer those monies to us.
Just, it says education right here. Just so, if I misspoke, I'm just the guy in front of the prompter. But thank you for, it's through Labor. I mean, we've had politicians of both stripes help direct funding to this institution, and we're grateful for that. That's the point. I just wanted to say, the administration doesn't always know how to deploy that money, and then our representatives in the delegation says, hey, here, right there.
Absolutely. And often, our elected officials will come visit those programs and have an opportunity to see them in action, and we always welcome that.
There's been some issues in the past month as to why Lee Cross does some of the things he does or doesn't do, and it's because we're grateful for everyone that helps contribute to the college. I mean, everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That's President Wal.
Thank you.
I was going to ask, how do we plan on using that grant on this one?
So that grant supports Johnson County Adult Education, which is a combination of our GED program as well as our ESL program. And it is the bulk of the funding for that program.
Thank you.
Enough detail?
Anything further for Ms. Waldman or on the consent agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Seeing no further discussion on the consent agenda, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Can I say unanimously? Four zero. Motion passes four zero.
Unanimously, those here.
The next item we have is for our executive session, and I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the preliminary discussion of the acquisition of real property for the purposes of expanding workforce development opportunities. No action will be taken at this session. The executive session will last for one hour, beginning at what time? 7:05? Is that all right? 7:05 concluding at 8:05 PM, at which time, open session will resume at the same location for those present in person and by Zoom for the rest. We would like to invite Dr. Bound, Dr. Neal, Elisa Waldman, Kate Allen, Rachel Leers, Tom Hall, Kelsey Nazar, and Zach Hubbard to join this executive session. And may I have such a motion?
It's a move.
Motion has been moved by Trustee Ingram.
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Coaston. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nobody else is here, passes four zero. We will see you at 8:05. Thank you for coming. Good evening. Welcome back to the resumption of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees meeting. We just met in executive session from 7:05 to 8:05. No decision was made. I don't have a script here for what to say after. I'm now going to say, entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second.
No, I don't have to have any discussion. We just vote. All those in favor, signify by saying...
Aye.
Aye.
No. We're stuck here. I say aye. The motion passes four to zero. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thanks.